The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council Monday, January 27th, 2025 will be called at order at 7:01. At this time, please join us for the invocation given by Alderman Savage, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May we legislate this evening with wisdom, patience, and respect. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Sir Mayor Buckley.
Yeah.
Alderman Huntley.
Here.
Alderman O'Neil.
Present.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Here.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Present.
Alderman Gay.
Here.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
This time I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to postpone ceremony items City Council Citation ID 1425, Citation Annapolis Santa Run until Monday, February 10th, 2025. Going to get a motion on that.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
That's great, because my update's not quite here yet. So can I go through in the council? We were just reading it through in the other room, and she's reprinting it. Can we start with the city council, please?
It may get 20 minutes tonight.
It's okay. It's only about 30 minutes long. So I'll be right here. Alderman Shannon Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters canceled its January meeting. We will be reconvening on February 19th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Alderman O'Neil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Transportation Committee meeting will take place on February 12th, the next one, at 4:00 PM. That will be a virtual meeting here in Earl, online. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage and Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I gave my report the last meeting. So our next meeting is February 13th at 3:00 PM. I don't know if it's virtual or in person. I think it's in person. Okay, it's in person. Thank you. And the agenda's not finalized, but I do recall, I believe Public Works is going to be presenting an update on the stormwater fee, their annual report to us.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett, you had your hand up, and then Alderman Gay.
No, I don't have a standing committee.
I saw your hand up. I apologize.
I was pointing to.
Alderman Gay, then Alderman Huntley.
He is the Finance Chair Emerita. Is it? He's the.
He's for the 2021 budget.
Housing Human Welfare Committee is scheduled to meet the 17th, but that's a holiday. So once we find out the TV studio's availability, we will reschedule our February meeting.
Thank you.
It's actually not a holiday. Excuse me. The city is reserving President's Day that day.
Thank you.
The Finance Standing Committee recommended favorably both a supplemental appropriation and a fund transfer at our last meeting. The supplemental appropriation 2425 provides $500,000 for a grant program to address environmental restoration with the Just Big Bay Trust. And I'm really excited about that one. I think that's cool. I had some great questions. I apologize to our urban forester who walked into that meeting for running into my wheelhouse and having to answer a bunch of detailed questions. But then our fund transfer was just moving some money around in the Rec and Parks budget, so they're able to do some repairs of one of their pools. Finally, we did consider, for our third or fourth time, FR 5324 changes to the executive pay ranges. We decided to postpone that until the Finance Committee meeting on February 19th, our next meeting, with the understanding that at that meeting, we either need to have some amendments, or we're going to recommend it unfavorably. So our next meeting again is February 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson, then Alderman Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rollson City Government Committee met on the 3rd of January, and I gave the report at the last meeting. Our next meeting will be on Friday, February 7th, 1:00, here in council chambers. All are invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Standing Committee will be meeting on this coming Thursday, and you worry, the 30th, at 6:30. And at that time, we will have presentations from NAMM and No Harm, Office of Emergency Management, Fire Department, Police Department. And at that time, we will be presenting data from 2024 and other pieces of information. But we also, this year, will be focusing per month on award. So we're focusing on Ward 1 this coming week, and we'll be taking inquiries from Ward 1 residents in person. And Alderman Huntley, I've conferred with him, and so he's aware of that. We also have two pieces of legislation to consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. All right. Thanks for bearing with me in reverse order here. So I'd just like to give you guys an update. Good evening, everyone. Last week, I attended the Annual Mayor's Winter Conference in Washington, DC. I always relish the opportunity to meet with other mayors from across the country, hear their issues, and learn from their ideas. When we're together, we don't ask about party affiliation. We just try to help each other and learn from each other. Mayors and local councils do not have the luxury of worrying too much about politics and ideology. We have to get on with the job of fixing local problems and ensuring our communities have what they need. That is why I was proud to present on the Hillman Garage P3 and the City Dock project at the conference. The level of interest was outstanding. We had a packed audience, and almost all the questions afterwards were about how did we do it here in the city of Annapolis. So many communities need to finance infrastructure and resilience, and the costs are staggering. We're all looking for innovative ways to get there, and Annapolis can be proud that we are ahead of the curve. So many big ideas have come from this community, the Hillman P3, the Resilience Authority, for an example. And I'm always delighted and proud to share with these, with other mayors, because we are working together on how to solve problems. Speaking of big audiences, as I noted at our last meeting, the City Dock Resilience Plan developed over four years with the community and with stakeholders, with the oversight of this council, has been approved by the Planning Commission and also approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. But as I said last week, there are some who are clearly seeking to prevent this project, designed with the community and for the community, from being completed. I find it interesting that many of the critics say, "I support the park and the resilience," and then go on to object to almost every aspect of the park and the resiliency. We've heard objections to the fountain, which was an idea first put forward in the jointly authorized City Dock Action Plan, published in 2020, and which was received in overwhelming positive feedback from across the community. We've heard objections to the raised covered area that can act as a stage when needed, even though, even though the need for performance space was also first outlined in the City Dock Action Plan, and is essential for so many events that are there and centered at City Dock for the community. While here in the city, we're going to invest in placemaking to create a park that is welcoming and an inviting place for everyone, a place where kids can splash in a fountain in the summer, or skate in a rink in the winter, if we make that happen, a park where we can all gather and listen to the great artists perform at the Singer-Songwriter Festival, or where we can continue to enjoy the amazing annual boat show, a park where we can sit in the shade, walk in the sun, access the water, and learn about some of the lost history of Annapolis that hasn't been widely valued before now. We've heard objections based on the maintenance cost, as though the city doesn't, didn't already have a Recreation and Parks Department or a Public Works Department that already undertakes this kind of maintenance all across the city. These concerns for future maintenance costs would be far more believable if the individuals who also showed the same concern for the staggering costs to the city of flooding events, and that happens more frequently each year. The costs for our public safety teams, our public works teams, are huge, and we will save those costs when we finally build out this project. Even more telling is the fact that these objectors never once acknowledged the costs to our businesses from this ongoing flooding. Apparently, these costs aren't worth mentioning. That is why there is a resolution before us on second reader tonight, because this project is urgent, and we cannot let a small group of narrow special interests derail all the work that we've done over the past five years. That is why we changed our legal strategy, and instead of opposing a stay brought about by an anonymous complaint, that we have asked the court to expediate the legal review, because we know the merits of this case and this project will speak for itself. So thank you. Just need to get that off my chest. In February, we will celebrate Black History Month, another chance to showcase the stories that have not always been acknowledged. As we, as we have each year, we will fly the flags of the African diasporas on Main Street, and we will host our weekly series of state of Black Annapolis events in partnership with the Michael E. Bush Library. The speaker series organized by the Mayor's Office of African-American Outreach Team will feature local experts, historians, on topics related to African-American culture and life, and the enduring contribution of African-American residents, past and present. The content is suitable for all ages, and each week, a free dinner will be provided by black-owned catering companies from the Annapolis area. Each event is free and open to the public. Please go to our website, annapolis.gov, and learn more about this amazing program. Another event we're excited to host in February is the Crown Affair, a key to the city award weekend ceremony to honor our own homegrown celebrity hairstylist Kendall Dorsey for his success working in the entertainment and fashion industry with some of today's top music and fashion celebrities. Kendall Dorsey was born and raised in Annapolis, graduated from Annapolis Public Schools, including Annapolis Middle and Annapolis High. His talent has led him to work professionally in New York, Los Angeles, and Miami, and abroad, and has also been featured in New York Fashion Week, Good Morning America, Vogue Magazine, Essence Magazine, and more. Kendall is truly a hometown hero and a force to be reckoned with in the professional hair and beauty industry. We look forward to honoring him with a key to the city on February 16th. Again, you will find details on our website. And this week, we will reach an important milestone in our planning for the Kazakhtonia Heritage Park. Recreation and Parks Department, in conjunction with the Resilience Authority, will host a series of community listening sessions to hear directly from you, what do you want to see in this new park. These sessions will be held from Thursday and Friday at 5:00 PM and 6:30 PM, and on Saturday at 9:00 AM, and on Saturday starting at 10:30 AM. There will be special sessions, youth workshops, to hear directly from young residents about what they would like to see in our new park on Edgewood Road. All sessions will be at the PIP Moya Rec Center. Please also go to the city website to find out about those events. And finally, I want to say thank you to our Recs and Parks and OEM staff for standing up the stand in center warming shelter for our most vulnerable residents and making arrangements for a daytime location so folks could get in from the extreme cold last week. It's been a hard time in Annapolis with a run of extreme cold weather. We haven't seen it in many years. I also want to commend our staff and our partners, including our state elected officials and Housing Authority Annapolis, for their efforts to ensure power was restored promptly to Robinwood residents last Saturday. It has truly been a team effort to see vulnerable residents safely through this cold period, and we truly feel for them. We are going to be, Alderman O'Neil is asking for some heads to roll at BG&E, so we will be following up on that. Well done to all the work that everybody was putting. Thank you for the notifications that came from all the council and all the work that you all put in over the weekend. I truly appreciate it. It was a great team effort. And so thank you, everybody. And now let's get on with the meeting. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
First up, Tim Leahy.
Tim Leahy, 110 Archwood Avenue. I have lived in Annapolis for 39 years and was also on the Historic Preservation Commission for 14 years. My wife also wanted me to inform you that I have a degree in architecture and an MBA and worked in construction management for 30 years. So I wasn't going to bring that up, but just so you know, I want to comment on the resolution for, for the City Dock. I'm glad I wrote down everything I wanted to say, because I follow on what I thought was somewhat disrespectful commentary there, Mr. Mayor. But I do thank you for all the hard work that you do. And I know sometimes it's a thankful, thankless job, but I really do thank all of you. Surprised, I'm here to support the resolution. I agree with Alderman Huntley's amendment. I would further strengthen the focus on flood resiliency by just deleting the last phrase, which just says, "as well as deliver other amenities and services." I think the focus needs to be on flood protection, and no one has argued with this for years and years. So let's just keep on that focus. To that end, I'd request more detail on the lump sum, the $63.5 million lump sum in the budget. It should be broken down to separate out the costs for floodgates, barriers, and walls that separate those out from the amenities, the other amenities, such as the pergolas, the chairs, and the game tables. In my opinion, it would be prudent to evaluate the costs of these and the ability of the city to pay for them over time. I think we might gain more traction with a smaller budget. Another question, just in general, the $72 million budget is, I'm not sure it includes the Compromise Street aspect of this, which was budgeted separately, and I don't see it, its progress. It was approved years ago, permitted, I believe, and it still was waiting for funding. I think I saw it in the capital improvement plan in July. So that's just kind of missing. So where is that? It's 72 million plus what's going on in Compromise. It's an important part of the flood resiliency. It's going to fail if we don't have that. Final budget question, Alderman Huntley. Thank you for responding today. The ongoing maintenance costs are important. We can't just ignore them. And I just think that there's no reason to not approve this resolution because of that. It just needs to be defined, and the public needs to be included. One amenity which I fully support is the Prince George Street Park. It's a major flooding problem, and I'm very happy that it's going to be named after my late friend Vince Leggett. It's very good to see that that's a start for the important heritage interpretation that we're going to have over the next decade, I hope. Okay?
You can go get.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. The project team has done a great job over the years with public outreach. I've participated in at least five meetings. But I'm still disappointed that some basic practical changes have not been incorporated. And my one practical change, I know I'm not taking a page out of your book. I know I'm not supposed to talk about the MWC, but just simple things like the bathroom locations so far away from where the bus drops off, drops off, has been brought up over and over again. So that could be moved into one of the vacant buildings and leased. So these creative ideas have not been incorporated. We see the same design over the last year. Alderman Savage, I could hear the frustration in your voice at the last meeting, like, where are these people and what are the concerns? So those, those are my concerns, my major concerns at this point. So in summary, I think you should amend and approve this resolution, and then ask the project team to focus on taking the flood aspects of this and breaking the budget out. Possibly, it can get moving with a smaller scope. White Interim might be able to get going if it were some smaller. Finally, I have to address assertions that there's a small group of people blocking this project. There are many reasons this project is behind schedule, not the least of which is the FEMA funding. And so it is not fair to say a small group of people are blocking this project. It's complicated. It's expensive. So please stop blaming people, and let's try and solve the problem together. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting the resolution. Next up, Tim Tower.
Tim Tower, 8 Taney Avenue. I'm here to say a lot of what Tim just said, so maybe I can keep it shorter than I had planned here. I'm a supporter of resiliency 100%. I feel so badly for the businesses and residents downtown around City Dock. But I do have concerns. You know, they center around the other amenities and services that Tim mentioned there, and they center around financing. I do not consider myself part of the small group of narrow special interest. I consider myself a taxpayer, okay? And it scares the heck out of me that we're talking about proceeding before 100% of the financing is definitive. I do not believe that it is. I think that we're depending on FEMA, and I think that's a very dynamic organization today, even more so now than just a couple months ago. Last week, our new president talked about eliminating FEMA 100%, okay? And in the last three weeks, FEMA has received over 68,000 claims or applications from the fires out in California. That certainly is going to play on their financing. And for us to think that that won't have an impact potentially on our FEMA funding, I think is not a smart move. On top of that, we've got state money, and our state is facing a multi-billion dollar deficit. And so, you know, all the stuff that we're expecting from other levels of government, I think, are less definite than they were a couple months ago there. And then secondly, the amenities and services that were mentioned and that are in the resolution there, it scares me that these are not wants. These are not requirements. These are not things that we need. These are things that would be nice to have, okay? They're the extras there. And to talk about putting in a splash pad, sure, it would be a blast and great for kids, but very expensive to put in, extremely expensive to maintain, and over half of municipal fountains in the US are decommissioned or inoperable within five years, okay? And that number's even higher in northern climates where we get freezes, okay? So for us to put money into that when we don't have 100% of the financing lined up for this project, I think is scary as a taxpayer there. We're going to be saddling the taxpayers with some long-term operational maintenance for the new project there, which is expected. I understand that. But I think that those exact operating expenses that we're going to have long-term have not been shared, have not been identified in dollars and cents, or at least I haven't been able to find them. And I don't, I don't even know if they're 100% identified there. So 100% for resiliency, and scared to death about the extra add-ons that would be nice to haves that are not requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Please come forward.
Can everyone hear me? Hi, good evening. Rachel Robinson from Historic Annapolis, 18 Pinney Street. I'm here to state for the record once again, Historic Annapolis's full support of resiliency at City Dock through flood barrier protection. Within our portfolio of historic properties, HA is the steward of five buildings, four owned by the State of Maryland and one we own, that are within view of City Dock and susceptible to flooding worsened by climate change. HA was the city's partner in the City Dock Action Committee, and we have been active in the protection of City Dock for more than a decade, and the main proponent of preservation in Annapolis for nearly 75 years. To question HA's commitment to the resiliency of City Dock is unfounded, as is the accusation that we are attempting to slow down this project. We have skin in the game with our buildings. Why would we do that? Our main criticism of the project is and has been the size of the proposed Maritime Welcome Center. That application, as you know, is currently going through the review process at the Historic Preservation Commission. We are watching it closely and preparing testimony. The Maritime Welcome Center is not part of resiliency, and disagreements over the proposed building should not be an impediment to realizing critical hazard mitigation at City Dock. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Please. Yeah, I can get you. Please come forward. Thank you.
Can you get that information?
Do you want to? We might have, Rachel might have a question for you. Sorry.
I'm just curious in what capacity you work with Historic Annapolis.
I'm sorry. Do you mind repeating that?
I have just, what's your role with Historic Annapolis?
Vice President of Historic Preservation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Rachel, can I just ask you, Historic Annapolis don't support the fountain?
The fountain has already been approved, as we understand it. We do not have a problem with the fountain or the park.
No problem with the fountain?
No problem that the fountain that has been approved.
Right.
That is not our main concern or criticism.
Stage area. Is approved the stage area?
Sir, we do not have a problem with anything that has been approved thus far.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Please come forward. Thank you.
Oh, man, the attitude there took a turn. Hello, everyone. I'm going to keep it light and positive. This is FA Brock, 1306 President Street. Wanted to give a few positive shout outs to city officials I've had interactions with over the last couple of weeks. Hopefully, I'll see you guys again soon. Wanted to first thank out the boys in green, the team I saw a couple weeks ago, finally getting rid of the hatefully planted spite trees in the Wells Cove easement that was blocking public access. Now, the only thing publicly blocking our access to the water is your aptitude and desire to move forward with ensuring riprarian rights and actual access to the water. So the fight goes on. Wanted to, so that would be Public Works and Planning and Zoning. We're behind that. Thank you, guys. The people on this council that recommended Strong Towns to me, I'm loving it. You know who you are. Department of Planning and Zoning Code Enforcement, Chief Code Enforcement, Mr. Manassa, and also Ms. Minkler in that office. Wanted to thank you guys, if you listen or are here, I doubt you are, for your help in addressing the issue of snipe signs proliferating in our neighborhood and being, you know, pasted aboard public utilities. Don't want to waste my time here. I will talk on the issue of premium parking's lack of enforcement on Compromise Street. Many of you guys are in those emails. Please take them seriously. An accident will occur. It will be your negligence that maybe causes that. it will be your negligence that maybe causes that if you don't address it. Wanted to quickly address the last thing. I don't have as well-prepared remarks on the resiliency project, although I'm generally in favor of it. And I really do hope that we get a nice, beautiful, large welcome center the public can access, like a public yacht club's view of our beautiful Severn River out across the bay, something we don't really have at just leg level at City Dock as it is right now with all those nasty parking, you know, spots that'll turn into a park. But what I just wanted to really say was from Historic Annapolis, you heard that they are maybe not okay with the size and location of this proposed welcome center. And so much of their funding comes from the people that own the lot downtown that have that huge hideous pest control billboard. And I also oppose the nasty size and location of that billboard. And you guys give that a pass, your planning and zoning or whoever department, because you're meant to regulate that a non-compliance sign come into code compliance if it is to be changed, if it was grandfathered in. So every time they change the appearance of that sign, you could do something immediately to beautify downtown and just say that billboard is not allowed and should come down. So please consider that something that would make everyone so happy. It's been so ugly in there since I was a child and it shouldn't be. And just get rid of it. And that has nothing to do with that project, but it, you know, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Okay, thank you. I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous items, beginning with appointments. And the first one is AP 4424, a reappointment of Mr. Robert Ruby, Building Board of Appeals.
Could I get a motion to approve AP 44-24?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is AP 4524, reappointment of Mr. John J. Swartz, Building Board of Appeals.
Could I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, sorry.
I'm just curious, does the code have limits on how long a member can serve on a commission?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Abstain. Yeah, thank you. Thought you guys had a sit-down. Do you have a sit-down? No, no. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is supplemental appropriations, $50,000 and above, beginning with SA 2425, reforestation fund, planning and zoning, FY 2024, reforestation fund, balance, contractual services.
Thank you. Could I get a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is fund transfers, beginning with FT 625, General Department of Recreation and Parks, Pool, Contractual Services, Supplies and Other.
Thank you. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, beginning with Ordinance O-225, WRNR, radio tower lease with the city.
Would anybody like to come forward and speak on the radio tower? All right, Alderman Gate.
Thank you. Just for clarity, all they want to do is just put it back to use for the same exact building, correct?
I believe so, but...
Thank you.
And if I can add one other thing, Alderman Gate, I think it's really important to note that the lease is as-is, so it does not obligate the city to add maintenance costs.
You, I'm sorry, you said the city is obligated?
The city is not obligated.
Oh, okay.
The lease is as-is.
Thank you. Okay, all those, oh, sorry, it's a public hearing, sorry. I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is legislative action, beginning with items on second reader, beginning with Ordinance O-3124, a mobile food service vendor's signage.
Is there a motion to adopt O-31-24 on second reader? Second. Alderman Savage has an amendment. Yep. Like to move that?
Yeah, I'd like to move Amendment 1. I will second.
Second, thank you. Alderman Gate and Alderman Shanomire.
Thank you. I just have concerns with legislation in general. I'll address quickly because I know we have a short agenda tonight. But I just think it's kind of unfair to the food truck, in particular because this was created just out of concern for a few spots in the city. And I think a food truck typically, at this point in Annapolis, are only really utilized around events, in private parking spaces, things that are already heavily regulated. And so I get the concern, but I'm just worried about, you know, what that may do to the industry. It's obviously not an expensive change, but it's a change nonetheless. I'll still vote for it, but I just wanted to echo the concern.
Thank you. Alderman Shanomire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to address Amendment 1, which might reduce some of your concerns. The main concerns from the food trucks that I had spoken to, Smash Burger's food truck, Orz Oscar's coffee truck, had been around the sandwich board regulations. Amendment 1 had been a very good compromise that had assuaged a lot of their concerns on the sandwich board issue. With that passing, most of them went from being very against this to a shrug and whatever.
Question, just two very quick questions. One, I'm wondering if some of the amendment is redundant. Signs not attached to the vehicle should be removed and stored when the food truck is not in operation. I feel like that's...
Sandwich boards are those little...
Yeah, the ones that we do downtown. And so they are, isn't, does the code already speak to the use of sandwich boards and requirements to remove or replace them during business hours and operations?
Let Alderman Savage answer that.
It does only for downtown. And so this part of the amendment, there was some concern from the food trucks, as Alderman Shanomire alluded to. They wanted to still be able to put a sandwich board signs up and the original version was a bit too restrictive. So Planning and Zoning recommended this and they just wanted to, they recommended this because they wanted to make sure that there wasn't proliferation of like dozens of these signs. And they want to make sure they didn't block sidewalks and egress, that kind of thing.
Lastly, no more than three removable signs are permitted to be displayed per vehicle. Does that include marketing materials, which is, you know, signage? How are you enforcing that? I'm just curious.
Which provision?
It says no more than three removable signs are permitted to be displayed per vehicle. I mean, would an amendment to that, or would you maybe add to that sentence during operation? If you have marketing materials that are on the vehicle, that shouldn't count.
That won't count because they'd be considered permanent sign. These are just removable.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out, having been the author of signed legislation, that the legislation for food trucks is much more lenient than the legislation for bricks and sticks kinds of buildings. I think the concern that this legislation is addressing is sort of the visual pollution of flashing lights and an abundance of lights. And I personally find it to be quite a good compromise. So I'm certainly supporting the amendment and the ordinance as amended.
Thank you. Alderman Neal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions in regards to that. I know of at least one food truck that currently has flashing lights banner, not to call them out, but it's the food truck that's on Bay Ridge at the gas station right before True Value when you're heading out. So would they be in non-compliance and have to remove that sign? Appears to be part of their truck. And, well, that's my first question.
Alderman Savage.
Yeah, I mean, that particular sign is what triggered this for me because I drive by it all the time, or bike by it all the time. But yeah, presumably they, you know, I haven't spoke to them as far as how they would handle it, but presumably they could just turn it off if they can't remove it from the vehicle. But the fact that it's flashing would be prohibited in the proposed code.
So it would be very different from, I mean, how does it differ from the, across the street, the Heiser pantry, whatever it is that has the flashing Lotto sign in it?
Well, that's, well, I don't know if that's in the, so those signs are, my understanding is they're prohibited currently.
Okay.
Because there's a prohibition in the code for brick and mortar stores. And when I brought that to the attention of staff, they said, "Well, we can't apply that code to the food trucks because they're on wheels" or something like that. And so it turned out they have no regulations on their signs. And again, part of my intention is I don't, personally just don't want to see those clips of flashing signs proliferate all the way down the road. It's not to, I haven't been in that business, I do need to stop by and try it, but it's nothing personal against them, I just, it just brought to my attention.
Okay. And then my last question is who's in charge of enforcement?
It'd be our Code Enforcement Office in Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
So I just want, on the record, Alderman Savage, this is not about any particular business, correct? This is a general provision. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gate.
I had a question from the public. So if the business currently has this sign that now will be illegal, will the city compensate them for what they've already invested in the business?
Probably not. I'm not aware of that type of practice happening.
I don't think the legislation's not written that way, so I don't think there is any plan for that, no.
Yeah.
Again, I think that's why, I think this could have been a policy thing, really, with, you know, with planning and zoning or something like that. Because the unintended consequences sometimes, even with these tiny businesses, you know, LED sign is $2,500. And so if they've saved up to invest in this sign and it's helping attract eyes to their business, eh, you know, but I honestly take your point valid and so that's why I'll still support it.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, could I get a motion to adopt O-31-24 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then a motion on third reader?
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Schelleyson.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomire.
Aye.
Alderman Gate.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
And Alderman Penile Charles. Thank you.
Stop calling him Alderman.
I'm so sorry.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-3524, Fair Cannabis Employment Practices, and there will be an amendment.
So moved.
Thank you. And I believe amendments coming up. Alderman Savage.
Do I want to speak to legislation or...
Can you move the amendment?
Move Amendment 1. Second.
And then can you give us some background, please, for me?
Yes. So this started, so what this legislation does is prohibit testing for cannabis, particularly testing employees for pre-screening, so when we go to hire, but also prohibits testing for cannabis of current employees. And it would exempt any positions where there's a state or federal law that overrules, such as U.S. Department of Transportation or, you know, the state policing laws, both concerns that were brought to my attention by Law Office and that's why we worked it in to exempt those. And so my rationale is that, you know, the current policy, and this is an issue with a number of jurisdictions, including the county, but the policies have not kept pace with the legalization of recreational and medical marijuana. And just as an example, the current policy states that if an employee is found tested positive for cannabis, that they have to go through a full drug rehabilitation program or if they're safety sensitive, they're subject to immediate termination. And so the problem with that is the testing utilizes, there's no biological testing that can detect whether or not somebody's impaired. It's, the city and the county use urine testing and urine testing can't actually detect the very component, the psychotropic component of THC that actually makes you impaired. It can't actually detect that. And so the test is flawed, which is why it's often overruled when people challenge it. And so since there is no, so the problem with the test, again, is it detects usage possibly months ago. And so, again, we're penalizing, preventing, basically if you're an employee, you can't even partake in legal recreational responsible use of cannabis because it could be in your bloodstream for months. And I think that's a bit overreach. I don't think we should begin to evolve with what employees do responsibly while they're off duty. And so this just limits that test, prevents the city from testing. However, it does also clearly prohibit on-duty use. This does not allow on-duty use of cannabis. It's going to be up to the supervisors to determine if somebody's impaired, be it cannabis or some other substance. And so there's still going to be that checks and balance. What we heard in some of the committees is that there's data from some institute, in particular, well, one in Canada, who did research to show that the best deterrent is just having a supervisor be aware instead of testing. We also have states that have had legal marijuana to one degree or another for well over a decade and they've not had any increase in on-duty usage of cannabis. They also have not had any kind of increase in workplace incidents.
Or overdoses or deaths.
Yeah, or no deaths, those kind of things that have been documented. So I feel pretty good about this. And also I should say, I was working on this for probably about two years, I couldn't quite figure out how to craft the language until I came across Governor Moore's executive order. And it was just so simple and common sense that I ended up copying it. We use the definitions from the executive order, his executive order just applied to state employees. But it essentially just declassified cannabis as a controlled danger substance, which means you can, you have a lot more nuance as far as how you manage it. Because controlled danger substance are by name dangerous and we want to make sure we keep those under control. But, so anyway, I want to thank the governor for providing the inspiration and the way forward on this and that's kind of my sum.
And the specifics of this amendment, and how many amendments are there?
The amendment is something that the city manager and human relation, I'm sorry, human resources recommended. And just to clarify, to give them some more comfort with those particular provisions, then we came, I do support the amendment.
Yeah, it, what it does is it focuses the definition of impairment, or it broadens the definition of impairment as a general condition and then narrows it where is most appropriate, which is when you're talking about discipline. People can be impaired for all kinds of different reasons, that's not necessarily going to lead to discipline. So it clarifies those relationships and I think leaves us with then code that really can speak to that question that Alderman Savage raised earlier of impairment, training of supervisors and some of that, which is obviously a longer-term discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Schelleyson, just to clarify too, we hear testimony and just to be clear that this, other jurisdictions have taken similar approaches, including Atlanta, Burnaloo County in Albuquerque, Cleveland, District of Columbia, Philadelphia, St. Louis, and several states have also adopted similar workplace protections, including California, Connecticut, Minnesota, Montana, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island. So it's nothing out of the unusual.
Thank you. Alderman Penile Charles and Alderman Gate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm clear, someone who's impaired as a result of cannabis versus alcohol, they're going to be treated the same way, is that correct?
So, so yes and no. The question of impairment on the job, regardless of why you might be impaired, is something that the city should respond to. The issue at hand here in the... The issue at hand here, and the reason why it's both yes and no, is that there currently are no tests to, that are correlated with impairment for cannabis, the way there are currently tests that are correlated with impairment for alcohol.
How about medications?
So, yeah.
Prescribed medication?
Yeah, the screening that the city contracts for does detect some kinds of prescription medications.
Okay.
Yeah. But this is in some ways why the change in the definition for us is, was something that we wanted to see, because impairment, as you allude to, can be the result of any variety of things. And when you're talking about safety, impairment in general is something we should be paying attention to regardless of source. The question of discipline being a somewhat related but separate question.
I guess I'm looking at equity.
So the legislation, from my perspective, does not differentiate why you might be impaired, right? The question of you shouldn't be impaired on the job, that is a through line with the legis, that doesn't change with this legislation. The question of, are you going to do testing for cannabis? The answer to that, given that there are no tests right now that are correlated with impairment, you would not test for cannabis because you don't have a test available that's correlated with impairment.
I'm still looking at the issue of equity, but thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gay?
Thank you so much. Just quickly, first, I want to say I'm incredibly proud of Alderman Savage for introducing this, getting the votes, and finally bringing this to fruition, and it's something that I've also been passionate about. In 2020, when Brandon Scott signed an executive order that allows Baltimore City employees to consume cannabis in their personal time responsibly, I thought we could have done the same thing immediately. And we linked up on this, and he's just really carried the ball for us, so I'm incredibly proud of him for that. To your point, and we were just sharing, there is equity in this, in the fact that nine times out of 10, the individual, regardless of how, regardless of the fact that we know that African Americans and Caucasians probably use cannabis around the same rate, African Americans are more likely to be punished for their use. And so for me, the important thing in this was making sure that, you're exactly right, that equity is there across the board, and that the city is deterring punishment, you know, for something that is completely legal. And so that, and also I share your concern as well, that for years, you know, somebody can get off of work at 4:30 and drink a case of Heineken or whatever their preference is, and show up to, hey, listen, that's how some people do, case, bottle, whatever, and show up to work the next day, but you couldn't get off of work and, you know, use vape or TAT, whatever you did, and, you know, come in, and that's just a huge problem. So I think we solve the equity in this. Lastly, I just, on the amendment, I think that impaired, why are we striking that results from use of drugs, alcohol, cannabis, or controlled dangerous substance? That wasn't really making sense to me, as it relates to the definition. It says impaired means reduced cognitive or physical ability, and then we strike why they would be impaired.
Assistant City Manager?
Yeah, the...
I see the Director of HR is walking up as well.
You want to come up?
Yeah, you can jump in, too.
Thank you, Trish.
We've gone through a couple of iterations of this amendment. An earlier version of this had simply moved that from the definition down to the bottom. But after consultation with Office of Law, we ended up settling on this particular language. So the, I understand your question. In this case, impaired as a definition is about your condition, not necessarily why you're there, right? That's something that comes later.
Can you, or either of you just maybe put my mind to ease on this? The reason that I ask that is because it says impaired means reduced cognitive or physical ability, and then we're replacing the new definition, prohibits the city from taking disciplinary, or taking disciplinary action against an employee found to be impaired while on duty. And so, again, there's, as the Alderman is saying, there's a difference in, you know, maybe me coming to work under the influence of, or impaired by cannabis and impaired by, you know, yeah.
Being a workaholic.
No, with something that's still very, very illegal, like cocaine, okay? You know, and so you would want to be able to discipline them for being impaired on that substance, and so why would we strike controlled dangerous substances?
Oh, no, no. So the way that that's, so nothing in this section prohibits the city from taking disciplinary, so what this says is that this, that if someone is found to be impaired, the city has the right to pursue disciplinary action.
So may I offer a little bit more to that? Tricia Hopkins, Human Resources Manager. The definition of impairment is in general section of Human Resources. So what we're trying to do is just corral the language in the cannabis-related pieces of that. It really wasn't to, like, take it away. That's really the gist of our conversation with Alderman Savage, that we really weren't trying to remove that or not acknowledge that, we just want to put it in the right location. And then what also, you know, we clearly want to make sure that we're not, we always make sure that we do a proper investigation, we're going to always do that evidentiary piece that's necessary before you ever even consider taking disciplinary action. We're not trying to even make all of this look like it's in that unique direction of carrying out disciplinary action. We're just trying to keep impairment general because it's in a general definition section. And then when we talk about those things that we're not going to do, or that we're not sanctioning, which is because we are clearly having to comply with federal law, which is creating a drug-free workplace as well as a safe workplace, we're trying to make sure that the areas that we would address that are in the proper sections of the code. And that's really the only intent with that change.
Thank you. Alderman Pendel Charles and Alderman O'Neill?
Just one commentary. I guess I think back on some of the people who've been released from their duties, or relieved from their duties due to alcohol. And seems kind of unfair. I guess that's my equity piece, but going back a ways. I mean, I support the amendment, but it's really, for some, it's too little, too late. I guess that's my whole point, so.
Re-insight?
I'm sorry.
You want us to re-insight?
No, I didn't say that.
Thank you.
All I'm saying is just, it seems, just my core says that. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alderman O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a constituent that had reached out to me today, and I just want to make a clarification. So he had said that all the focus lately has been on employee rights, and what rights do employers have to protect the business's brand and the other employees. But what I'm hearing from you is that's exactly what this is doing. It's allowing the city to still uphold, you know, his example is they've consumed off-duty, like, in their private home or their car's on their way to work, but then they're coming to work impaired technically, or could be. So I just wanted that clarification that, we've answered that, correct? With your explanation?
I hope so. That was the intent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage?
Yeah, and just a couple of clarifications. And one of the things that, I guess, calls me to be supportive of this amendment was, you know, during our conversations with HR and Risk Management, they gave an example of a lifeguard. And I said, well, that's a good point, because really, we don't want a lifeguard impaired in any manner. It doesn't matter if it's cannabis or if they're too tired. As somebody who used to be a lifeguard, you have to be alert, right? And so that's where it comes back to supervisor, in my mind, doing what a supervisor should be, is making sure that their employee is doing their job as best they can. Doesn't matter how they're impaired, they need to be doing their job well. And again, that's, I just want to reiterate that the research that's out there has not shown any kind of increase in on-the-job usage or on-the-job impairment when the laws are made to be more fair, like we're proposing. There's been, I know some people are hesitant because they're concerned employees will show up stoned, but it just hasn't proven out in the data.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to be added as a sponsor, please. My question is for Ms. Hopkins, how are employees prepared? You know, we oftentimes set policies and make all sorts of changes, but it never gets down to the people who are directly impacted. So how do the employees know about their rights?
So in orientation, we go over all of our policies with incoming employees. All of our policies are online as well, and individuals have access to them through our employee self-service, so that it's an ongoing access point for them. With this change, I imagine that we're going to need to clarify shift in direction as a result of this ordinance, if it passes and changes the code tonight. So we would need to make sure that we're providing that kind of guidance to employees as well. We are already set up to not test individuals who would be exempted under this legislation, so we've already been contacting our vendor that we work with for our drug and alcohol testing. And we are poised to make the appropriate changes to our policy, and that would be redistributed to our employees.
I hope we take every possible opportunity to educate our employees as opposed to expecting them to just go read the policy, you know, and to let them know that we're following the same guidelines that the state's following. So we're not, because this can be misinterpreted, you know, under the exemptions, and if you don't read the nothing in this section piece, you miss that. Because the next part is the most important. So to make sure that, and I don't know why that couldn't be highlighted in such a way, so we know that nothing in this section prohibits disciplinary action if an employee is employed or impaired on the job. But anyway, I would hope that we would make an extra effort to give the employees a level of comfort in knowing what this does, how this impacts them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Let's vote on the amendment. How many amendments are there, please?
Just one.
Just one? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Can I get a motion as amended, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Can I get a motion on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Shannon Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Huntley?
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill?
Aye.
And Alderman Pendle Charles?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-325, City Dock with Z and Z Project.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. I think we have an amendment, is that right?
Yes. So Amendment One, what you have before you, is really not meant to change the resolution at all.
Can you just move it and get a second, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So moved. Thank you. Yes, Amendment One is not meant to change the resolution at all, as I understand it was always the intention for this, really just to be about Phase One, which has already gotten all the approvals. My hope here is just to make that even more clear, and I think particularly because we're saying in here that the council commits to it, I want everybody to know exactly what we're committing to. I hope that this does not make any of my colleagues feel like we're trying to shut out the Maritime Welcome Center, say that that is opposed in its current form, it's just saying, it's just making even more clear that this resolution is about the part that's already gotten all of the city approvals.
Keep the park and the flood protection and all the approvals that it has already. Thank you. Any questions on that? Alderman Shannon Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's fair, because the Maritime Welcome Center is a totally separate piece of the project, and this clarifies that, so, good idea.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Can I get a motion as amended, please?
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Mayor, I should have been listed as a sponsor, and I'd like to be.
Thank you. Alderman O'Neill?
I just have one, on my copy that I'm looking at, it says R-324, first reader. When I click that, it does click through the 325, but I don't know if that needs to be changed if somebody were trying to search for it.
Gina?
Yeah, it is. It's in mine also.
The legislation is R-325.
Twenty-five, correct?
Yeah. We'll make sure it's correct.
Voting on 325? Yes, okay. Got some hands up here, we've got a first and a second. Alderman Gay, then Alderman Shannon Meyer?
Thank you. Two quick questions, because I just want to clarify for the, when they, when people keep mentioning that the city can lease space downstairs, or downtown from vacant buildings, one, have we done a feasibility study on that by any chance, and just what it would cost to lease for the foreseeable future as opposed to building and owning our own? You know, maintenance included in that, obviously, upkeep. I'm just curious if we've actually looked into that. Not that I am a fan of leasing, I think it's, you know, donkey backwards to lease an old building when you have an opportunity to create a state-of-the-art facility for your visitors and residents. So curious if that has been done in the Action Committee?
It has been done. We've asked various property owners if the properties are for sale. We know that some of the properties are for lease, and I think it's been assessed, you know, as are the right locations. I mean, I'm sure most of us would agree that the Mission Barbecue, a location would be a terrible place to put a harbor master, we'd all agree. And then I would think that many of us might agree that to lease a building just to put toilets in is probably not the best idea. Maybe the visit Annapolis might support, share that use, but I haven't had any interest from them. I think we've all been through this two, three-year process of time for people to put in, put that, those ideas forward, and none of those ideas have eventuated, and that's why we're here today.
But that's not relevant to this resolution.
Yeah.
Well, in a way, it is. My last question also, or just comment, actually. There is no city, and we were talking about this at lunch, that I know of that has, you know, 40,000 or over 40,000 residents, that doesn't have some sort of city center space. And, you know, one of the things that just upsets me about this and some of the public comment that we've been hearing is, you know, it just, it's not, they're against revitalizing the downtown. I want people to, for a quick second, if you have an opportunity on Friday or Saturday, or even during the week, look at the Annapolis Town Center, and then look at downtown Annapolis, closed at 8 o'clock, not a single soul walking around. The town center's packed. They're hosting events, they've got skating rinks out there, hot chocolate things, all of these things that we could be doing on a new downtown that protects our businesses, but also serves our residents and helps us stay economically viable. I feel like that's the most important thing. If we don't have that, we don't have a city, really. That's where our money comes from, and so I support this and can't wait for the project to take off.
Thank you. Alderman Savage, I think, sorry, was next, and then Alderman Shannon Meyer, then Alderman Huntley, sorry.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a quick thought, based on some of the testimony I've heard and read... I've heard and read over the past few days or weeks. You know, there's been opposition on some of the public amenities that we've been proposing to add, and those, I think, are, I mean, what makes me most excited is that we're finally trying to do some resilience and protect our city dock, which has been a very, very long time coming. And, but the public amenities also just make me very excited. I'm really glad that we've looped those in. I'm a firm believer of those. I, because what I don't understand about some of the concern that we've heard from some people about the amenities is that, you know, what's there now is a parking lot, and it would cost money to put a parking lot back. So, why not just spend that money to put in an actual public amenity that's going to draw people downtown? That, I think it's worth the investment to make it more lively, as Alderman stated. So, 100% behind it, and thanks for getting those things in, that project.
I'm sure when they see them in other cities, they like them. I don't know why that wouldn't work here, you know. Alderman Shanomeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm reading this book called For the Love of Cities, and it stresses how building a place for people to connect with each other and with the place that they live in and inhabit creates this genuine emotional connection to their city, and that boosts civic engagement, that boosts economic activity, that boosts community pride. And I see that in these public amenities that we want to put in in city dock. And when people reach out to me and ask, "How do I feel about the park and all the amenities that we put in?" That's what I tell them. I want this to be a place of awe. I don't want to spend tens of millions to hundreds of millions of dollars raising a parking lot. I think that would be a waste. If we're going to put that much money into it, let's do something that we can be proud of on some of the best real estate on the East Coast. And I had some people actually reach out to me today. They did oppose the fountain, but even when I drove down into them, or dug into it a little bit and asked, like, "Well, what would you like?", even they actually wanted some cool amenities. And I do encourage them, if they're listening, to come in and suggest what some of those may be. But even they came in and saying, "Well, here's some alternative suggestions." But if someone is just going, "No, let's spend all this and just raise a parking lot," that's, it's silly. And there's really no other way to phrase it. This is going to be a project that generations after we are gone will be with. Let's spend the money on something we are going to be proud of. Our names are going to be attached to this, and I want to be proud of that. And that's not going to be lifting a parking lot. It's going to be in a park that I can show my children, that they could potentially show their children. Let's go for it. Let's get this done. I'm very excited for this resolution. I'm very excited to get a shovel in the ground for this resiliency, for this park. Let's do it.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley, then Alderman Pindell Charles.
Good news here.
Thank you. Alderman Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a personal note. When I was a chap, my mom and I, and my dad would bring us, because my mom wasn't driving, would bring us downtown every Saturday. We'd go to Reynolds Tavern, where the old library was, listen to some stories, and we'd go shopping. We saw people in our community all the time. My aunt worked downtown, and quite a few people that, from my church, worked downtown. So, there were a lot of people that I knew from our community, especially from parole, who came downtown every Saturday and during the week as well. I was on a task force, I guess, about 15 years ago, when Kirk Schmoke was in charge, my old boss. You can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And so, at that time, we talked about the city dock as well. That was on the hearts and minds of everyone. About a year or so ago, I was at one of Alderman Arnett's town halls over in Eastport, and a gentleman stood up and asked me point-blank, "How can we get more people to come downtown?" I knew what the question was. And I told the gentleman, as far as I'm concerned, and he was talking, I guess, about parole, I told him I really didn't know. But I thought about it later. I thought about what we've been trying to do with downtown over the past several years. And I do believe, and this is my belief, that with these amenities, we can actually draw people who live here downtown, all sorts of people. You can go downtown now, someone was telling me recently, that they don't recognize, they sat here for four hours, he and his wife, and they're well-known, I'm not going to mention their names. They've been here a long, long time. They don't know anybody, no residents, nobody looks familiar that comes downtown. And so, we have to do something. And if it draws people from our communities, from every community to come downtown, for me, it's well worth it, because the same people pay the taxes, whoever they are, wherever they live, but not taking advantage of it because there's nothing that they feel close to, to come downtown for. So, I know we've had a lot of iterations, and we've talked about different things, but I think it's really important for us to think about the residents. We know the visitors are going to come, but there needs to be something downtown that brings the residents downtown that's really important to me. I remember when it was a lot of fun coming downtown, and I saw people that I knew, but I don't see them anymore. But that's really, I guess, as far as Gump say, that's all I got to say about that. But no, I think we really need to do this thing. It's been going on much too long. The one other thing I thought about too recently, the trauma that our businesses go through every time we have a flooding event. That's clinically traumatic. I'm not a clinician, but I would venture to say it's got to be clinically traumatic, to have them go through this over and over and over again. So, that's my three cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I want to thank everybody for supporting this. This is happening because of this city council here. So, we, you know, whatever we do in our future lives, we'll always be able to look back on this and know that we built a city dock for the next generation, and we protected the downtown. And, you know, clearly, it's not an easy thing to do, and that's why no one has attempted it before us. So, I want to thank everybody for their support and like to do a roll call for this. Thank you.
Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Shanomeyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
An emphatic aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Huntley?
I'll echo Alderman Gay's emphatic aye.
Alderman O'Neil?
Aye.
And Alderman Pindell Charles?
I'm having what Gay and Huntley are having.
Your resolution passed.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Attendance complete, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anything else for good order? Alderman O'Neil?
Thank you very much. I know you said it earlier, but I wanted to give a huge shout-out to Director Simmons of OEM. I don't know about you all, but my text came through at 1:05 a.m. on Saturday morning. I happened to hear the buzz go off, so he started working on it prior to that. Didn't stop until he was sure that every single one of our residents was safe and had a warm meal in their belly. So, I wanted to just shout out to Director Simmons and his staff for taking care of our residents once again.
There were a lot of directors on the call. We were on the phone a lot all weekend. And so, for the public, I think it's nearly 50, 40, 30 residents were without power. In this cold, freezing cold weather, power went out overnight. The utilities, people left the job, didn't finish the job, didn't come back till the next morning. Some of our residents were without heat. And then, without ability to cook food, we found food, we found shelter, and we got through it. But it must have been harrowing for all the people that lived there. I want to thank Alderman Gay for his input there.
I'm just jumping a blessed insect, too.
Yep.
Because they were at the warming center, then jumping on this and getting the meals. And so, I think these are times where we're grateful that we live in a close-knit, small city, that where people are able to rely on their city government. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Shanomeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say publicly a big thank you to Public Works. We had a waterbain break in my neighborhood last Wednesday, and specifically, a thank you to Warren, who came out quickly and helped fix the issue in the middle of a freezing cold night. Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Public Works Emergency Response Team. You guys work hard. I know all the recent cold and snow, you've been getting it hard from everybody, including us, but you do work hard and you do work effectively. So, thank you, team.
To add to that, you know, it's easy for us to find fault in government. It seems to be the flavor of the month now. But, you know, we're not the people down those hole, you know, those deep holes in the freezing cold night trying to connect to Maine. And if you've seen that kind of work, it's not easy, and it's not easy in the night. And there's been a lot of it because of these extreme conditions.
It was 15 degrees that night. So, thank you, Warren.
Something also very important, somebody just reminded me. I've been getting a lot, a lot, a lot of calls and concerns about ICE. And, you know, and particularly when, I represent a school, and Tyler Highs has a 98% Hispanic and Latino population. And I would hope that in the next few weeks, maybe we could get a closed session together with the Police Department, Office of Emergency Management, and any individual that needs to be involved, because we don't have a plan in place if ICE shows up to our community schools and starts trying to rip families apart. And so, I would hope that we could be, you know, vigilant in that as well, and try to get some plan together. If the city already has a plan, then I would hope that we could share it with the council. So...
We're working on getting a post-snow debrief work session.
ICE, ICE, ICE.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry.
I should have said that.
You can tell where my mind is.
There you go.
I'm sorry. My mind went to the wrong ICE.
All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.